All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I will call a Saffron's Stratford City Council meeting to order. The first item is a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Joining me in the council chamber today for the meeting is our Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson, our Deputy City Clerk Chris Bantock, and our Clerk Services employee Jody Atkins. Now, there are a number of directors online with us as well as the City Clerk. And with that, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of temporary interest. And if there are any to be stated, please state the general nature thereof.
Counselor Brevek.
Yes, for Standing Committee for Finance and Labor Relations, item 4.1 is the report of the Community Grants Evaluation Committee. I have business or board relationship with the following organizations: Stratford Symphony Orchestra, Inner Chamber, and Here For Now Theater Company.
Thank you. You'll have to read. Last, the deputy clerk.
I have it all written down, too.
Thank you. That's perfect. Thank you, Joy. Anyone further? Next item.
Item number three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated March 8, 2021, and the special minutes of March 15, 2021, of Council of the City of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Henderson and seconded by Counselor Gaffney. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Let's carry. Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and there is no addenda to be adopted today. Number five is reported the committee of the whole in-camera session, item 5.1. At the March 15, 2021 session, under the municipal act, matters concerning advice that is subject to certain client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose were considered at the in-camera session, direction was given on item. Item 5.2, at the meeting held just prior to this one today, the following matters were considered: personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees; a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence municipality, which if disclosed can reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization. In addition to other in-camera reasons for that item, a trade, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, in addition to information explicitly supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board by Canada, a province, or a territory, or a crown agency, or any of them; proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board, and personal matters for an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees.
Thank you.
Item number six. I'll turn over to Mayor Matheson for an item of recognition.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to make a presentation this afternoon on behalf of the city and, of course, City Council to one of our employees. And joining us on the Zoom meeting this afternoon is our transit driver, Stephen Nally. Stephen's with us. Thanks so much for joining us. On February 23rd, Stephen had two passengers on his bus on his route when he saw smoke pouring from the back of a home on Borden Street. One person on the bus called line 911 while Stephen frantically started knocking on neighbors' doors to alert them to the fire. The occupants of the home on fire were outside and disoriented, and they stayed warm on the bus before paramedics arrived. Stephen has been a transit driver for the city since September 2018 and a valued employee of our transit team. We would like to recognize and thank Stephen for his quick thinking, courageous efforts, and his responsiveness on February 23rd. He helped avoid the loss of life, helped support the families involved in the tragedy, and was a great ambassador for our organization and, of course, for the Transit Department in particular. Stephen, on behalf of council, thank you for joining us today, and we offer you our heartfelt thank you for all that you've done and for those that suffered through that fire. So thanks so much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Stephen.
Thanks, guys.
Item 7.1 is a resolution for alfresco and outdoor dining for 2021. And there is a staff recommendation that alfresco picnic tables be reinstalled in Market Square, 25 and 5 accessible, and the boathouse area with 10 and 3 accessible socially distanced on or about May 1, 2021, through to the end of the patio season on or about October 31, 2021. And it's my understanding that the CEO of Invest Stratford and the Executive Director of Destination Stratford are on the line to answer questions.
Yes, I believe Zach Gribble, the CEO of Visit Stratford, is going to speak to this. If there's any questions, does any member of council have any questions? If not, a motion, Counselor Ingram, seconded by Counselor Bunty. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. Yes, so I am in favor of having the picnic tables back in both Market Square and the boathouse area. I'd just like to be sure that while we're doing this, we have made some room for the slow food market on Wellington Street and/or Marketplace, just because we have heard from both the vendors and participants of the slow food market that the York Street parking lot where it was held last year was not accessible or convenient. It just wasn't working nearly as well. So to be sure, before we approve this, I'd just like to make sure that we have made provisions for the slow food market.
To Mr. Bantock, if you would like to speak to it.
Through your worship, I believe Allison Jordan, the events coordinator, is on the line. I'll refer the question to her.
Thank you.
Through your worship, I'm not sure if our events coordinator is having technical difficulties, but I can advise that staff are working on a report regarding the potential one-way of Wellington Street. As part of that consideration, there was a discussion about having slow food market locate onto the portion of Wellington Street. So those discussions are being had. Consideration is being made.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Anderson.
Well, following up on what Counselor Ingram was talking about, just I've heard several complaints, and I'm sure other councils have too, about the issue with the hill where the slow food market was and everything, that I hope we can accommodate it. If Wellington Street doesn't become one way, that we can still move the tables around and still have the slow food there on it's just one day a week. So hopefully that's being taken into consideration. And I have another question. It was on page 53 of our report. It says participating restaurants will be required to obtain joint liability insurance covering the city of Stratford as additional insured for a minimum of $2 million. Is this the same $2 million that they already have to have the patios? Or is this another that they have to have because people are buying liquor and food from their establishment? Just wanted to have that clear in my mind.
Through your worship, my understanding is that it would be a different $2 million, and the requirement for that insurance would have been discussed with the cities insurer prior to making that requirement.
So they have to have their regular for patio, and now they have to have another? And why would they have to if somebody's buying food and drink from their place, taking it somewhere else? Like, what's the difference if you're picking? I don't understand that. Why they're going to have to have that extra expense? Because that's going to run them around, what, $1,700? Maybe more? I don't know. Is it a requirement of the LCBO or something, or?
Mr. Fo.
So through your worship, so as the deputy clerk advised, we did consult with our city solicitor and our insurer, and they have recommended that in order to protect the liability of the city, that as part of this program, each participating restaurant supply $2 million insurance. As these individuals are going to be purchasing alcohol from restaurants and then consuming them in Market Square, there is a concern. If a restaurant is not participating in the program and is not actively encouraging people to purchase alcohol and consume it in Market Square, then they would not be required to provide us the liability. With respect to the patio program, again, there's a different level of risk and liability because they're actually using municipal land as a patio. So that's why there is separate insurance requirements for both. So it is required from our city sure and city solicitor perspective, and we kept it at the $2 million level as per last year instead of increasing it to $5 million, which was the original recommendation, because of the financial burden we thought it could pose.
So last year, they paid the two of them? The two different insurances also?
Through your worship, from my understanding, I do not believe it was our requirement last year. However, because the program continues to evolve, they've recommended that it be implemented for this year's program.
Counselor Brevek.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the the slow food market. I also did talk to a couple of the business owners along York Street who were also saying that on Sundays, it was they found it very difficult that their customers weren't able to park in the York Street parking lot. So I think the businesses along York Street, although they anticipated there would be a lot of foot traffic, there ended up being a lot of car traffic and people illegally parking on York Street. And it just, it wasn't really conducive to helping their business along. So I definitely would be in support of the slow food market back at Market Square or on Wellington.
All right, thank you. Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Ingram.
I'm confused, your worship. Are we approving the whole solo market moving, or is this about putting the picnic tables out?
Counselor Gaffney, it's about putting the picnic tables out, but I think some members of council are just seeking clarification for a motion which they might bring later for approval. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. So I just wanted to go back to the insurance piece for a minute. Am I correct in saying that the insurance last year for the patios was not required because most of the patios were on the sidewalk and the boardwalk was in the traveled municipal right-of-way? And so that's the difference between last year and this year?
Mr. Fo.
So through your worship, no, the insurance requirement for the patios was still required last year. I believe it was for the alfresco program. I do not recall if we required the $2 million liability insurance. Previously, looking to my counterparts, Zach Gribble or our events coordinator, just to confirm that.
Mr. Gribble.
Again, I don't have last year's information, but it's my recollection that it was not required as part of alfresco last year.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson.
Well, I thought last year we waived the patio fees, but they still had to apply for their license and still have insurance. Is that how it went? But I, when I read.
Through your worship.
Go ahead, Mr. Fo.
Through your worship, yes. So we have the patio program last year. We waived the fees. They were still required to apply for their license, and they were still required to obtain insurance. That insurance amount was at $2 million. If the program were to continue in the future, the recommendation would be to increase that amount to $5 million. But that would exclude the standard patio.
So in the past, it's always been $2 million, and our insurance company is recommending we start to increase that to $5 million? Is that what you're saying?
Through your worship, yes. In the future, for the 2021 season, the recommendation is $2 million.
But they're looking at $5 million for 2022?
Through your worship, that would be a consideration for any proposals submitted to council.
So I guess I'm just confused about. To me, it seems that they're having to pay the insurance twice. Once for having a patio and once for selling food with liquor. And if it's not a requirement of the LCBO, why are we charging that? I know our insurance company is recommending it for liability for us. I guess it's what it's trying to protect. If somebody, say, went to the hub and bought sandwiches and a drink, and then took it down to Tom Patterson Island, and then something happened because they had this drink with them, that it covers us for insurance because it's their policy, but yet it's really on our property. I don't understand. To me, it feels like I don't want to say double dipping, but I don't understand why if the LCBO doesn't require, why we're adding that on.
So through your worship, the LCBO really isn't involved in this program. So the alfresco program is where restaurants can participate. They can sell liquor with food, and then those individuals can enjoy it on specific municipal property. With that comes risk and liability to the city, and as a separate program, the recommendation is to require a $2 million liability insurance. If a restaurant is not participating in the alfresco program, is not encouraging its patrons to consume the alcohol in Market Square, then technically they would not be participating and would not be required to obtain the $2 million liability insurance. And again, this was determined in consultation with our city solicitor and our insurer.
And how are we going to track that if some restaurant maybe in a month or so decides, oh, well, we're gonna besides our takeout, we're not going to add that you can buy booze? But maybe it's going to the person's home and not down to Tom Patterson. And how do they know where the person's going with it? I guess that's I think it could be a real mess.
Mr. Fo.
So through your worship, the main issue would be if there was an incident on municipal property. If there was an incident, we would have Stratford Police Services officers and their personnel who then would investigate. We are asking participating restaurants to advise their patrons to keep their receipts on them. If they keep their receipts on them, then it shows that they purchased their alcohol at a location which is participating in the program. Again, no program is perfect, but all of these items have been put in place in order to reduce the risk and liability to the city.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Anything further? Not all call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Let's carry. Thank you. Next item.
Item 7.2 is a resolution for the consumption of liquor in alfresco dining locations for 2021, and there is a staff recommendation that a bylaw authorizing the consumption of liquor in alfresco locations, specifically Market Square, Tom Patterson Island, and designated areas within the Avon River Park system from May 1, 2021 to October 31, 2021 be adopted.
Moved by Counselor Gaffney, seconded by Counselor BD. Discussion. Counselor Seven.
Thank you. Could I just have clarification about the two bylaws that are being repealed? And is that a temporary thing, or are they being repealed indefinitely as part of this motion?
Through your worship, it is my understanding that those bylaws are being repealed because they were adopted for last year's program.
Thank you. Anything further? Not, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Let's carry. Thank you.
Item 7.3 is a resolution for community safety and well-being plan interim report, and there is a staff recommendation that council receive the community safety and well-being plan interim report for information purposes.
Mover, Counselor Vazalaco, seconded by Counselor Brevek. Discussion. Counselor Vazalacos. Okay. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Oh, Counselor Brevek, did you? Go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to to thank the staff for the report. I think it's kind of important that we know what's going on with this health and well-being report. I've been I've been curious about what kind of information has been included. So I think the report is important for us to know exactly where this is going, and that it could lead to other initiatives. For instance, like the Ciat, the Community Equity Action Plan that we're rolling forward with, there may be other initiatives that might stem from it. So excited to see what's coming in the future.
Counselor Vazalacos.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, it had switched to a different speaker. My apologies. I was just saying that I appreciate the fact that this community safety and well-being plan is coming with an implementation plan. I know that there are others in other communities that don't have attached to it, so I like that piece. And I appreciate the fact that it just won't collect dust. Sometimes these plans tend to do that without a clear implementation.
Thank you. There's nothing further? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? Let's carry.
Item 7.4 is a resolution for 2021 patio pricing options. And there's a staff recommendation that option number be approved to set the 2021 fees for outdoor patios occupying parking spaces and that a flat fee not to exceed $800 be approved for each delivery, installation, disassembly, and pickup patio boardwalks.
Counselor Bunty.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion. I know it's premature for option number four to be considered. It's a one-size-fits-all, and I realize that there's different square footages and so on and so forth, but I believe that this summer will be something similar, hopefully a little better than last year. And I think it would make it easier for staff just to have a flat fee involved as opposed to figuring out square footages and multiplying it by, because there's not a lot of difference really from what I can see anyways. So I'd like to make that motion.
It's your second, if that counts for seven. Discussion. Counselor Ingram.
Thank you. I'm wondering if the mover and seconder would be willing to waive the fees for anyone that was not able to participate in last year's boardwalk program? So those who had the opportunity to participate and you know, had the benefit of the funding that was provided last year, they would be subject to this this flat rate model where those who did not have the opportunity to participate and are now just entering into this particular program would have the fees waived for this year.
Mr. Bantock.
Through your worship, just to seek clarification, Counselor Ingram, is the intent for your motion just to waive participants who could not participate in the boardwalk program and pop-up patios would still pay for a fee this year, or would just be those that could not participate in the boardwalks last year?
It would be both the boardwalk and the pop-up patio program, only because I think we had this discussion a number of times last year about having such a pop-up patio program. And I think there was maybe only one that was able to come forward with a pop-up patio, and that would be Revel Cafe, and even they weren't able to get up and running until August, so they had lost half of their patio season. So anybody that wasn't able to participate in the program last year and benefit through the funding, I think should have the benefit of having their fees waived for this year. And I'm wondering if the mover and seconder would be agreeable to that.
Counselor Bunty is the mover.
I have to say that I've got a little bit of a problem with that. And as much as I don't know what the overall difference will it be, I don't know how many people we're talking about here and that sort of thing. So what's the end dollars? I do believe that the 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 motion that I've made is the best motion for all considered, and bearing in mind that there are many businesses. I'm thinking of a couple in particular on Ontario Street that weren't able to, just by sheer location, that they couldn't because they were on the corner beside a pedestrian crosswalk or or maybe even near a fire hydrant. So they couldn't take part in a lot of this last year. So I would I don't want to be a meanie about this, but at the same time, I would like to know how many we're talking about and what the overall difference would be at the end of the day. Would it be possible to have staff have a look at that and bring back a further report, but carry on with option number four? And then, once we know the numbers, maybe the numbers are insignificant. I don't know.
Counselor Brevek, then Counselor Vazalacos, and then Counselor Henderson.
Thank you. I like Counselor Ingram's idea, and I don't think even if there were two people, it's certainly not insignificant for that two, those two business owners. It's quite significant for them on a personal level. The other thought we could have is if we don't want to open it up to everybody who's new into the program, perhaps it's for the people who applied last year and were denied being a part of the boardwalk program. That would narrow it down somewhat. But I I would prefer that everybody be offered that, if possible, to have their fees waived if they were not able to participate last year because of the fairness factor that a lot of times we just said no because physically it couldn't work for their location, the way that the pop-up patio could work. So I think it would only be fair to give them the additional assistance that others got last year.
Counselor Vazalacos, then Counselor Henderson, then Counselor Seven.
So if I recall from the boardwalk program last year, there were additional costs that were picked up by the program, I believe, things like engineering drawings and a number of other things. And so what we would be waiving this year for the businesses that weren't able to participate are those those fees that are paid to the city for the parking spots and the permit fees and such, but that those businesses are still going to be having costs associated with designing it and some drawings and things like that. So so I think it's a small, it's almost a smaller you know, benefit that we're giving those new businesses, but we are giving them a break on part of what would have been offered to businesses last year. So I like the idea of equalizing it out over the two years.
Counselor Henderson, then Counselor Seven.
Yes, I agree too with what Counselor Ingram was proposing because of the fact that they're going to have more expenses, like they're going to have to buy chairs, maybe umbrellas, maybe heaters, tables. So I think we received one estimate from one business in town that would run them almost $10,000. And then to add that fee on. I mean, maybe what would help is to make an amendment to it that includes basically what Counselor Ingram was saying. And that's no, I was going to say the staff come back with a a report on how many businesses there are, but instead, maybe what I'll ask is, Chris, do we know how many applied last year that got denied? Do we have that knowledge, Andy?
Through your worship, I am not familiar with the number of businesses that applied last year and did not receive. Perhaps the city clerk or the CEO of Invest Stratford could elaborate.
Through you, your worship, from through your worship, from my recollection, I believe it was only two businesses that were unable to participate. I believe it was Pazo and
soup surreal.
I don't believe we heard an interest from them. The other one would have been Downey Street Burger. This is one of the issues with determining who couldn't participate last year in the program. There were some businesses that could have participated and chose not to. And I would just like to clarify that the expenses that were covered last year by the Fed Dev program were for the creation of the boardwalk, which was the sidewalk. We did not support businesses by providing them with tables or chairs. There were some donations from other organizations on the stanchions to mark the board or to, sorry, to outline the patio and to address some safety concerns. But neither the city nor the Fed Dev program provided funding to actually create the patios or tables and chairs and those sorts of items. But neither the city nor the Fed Dev Program provided funding to actually create the patios of tables and chairs and those sorts of items.
All right, Counselor Seven, and then Counselor Ingram and Bunting.
Thank you, yeah, I was just, I was just wondering possibly, I guess suggesting that we, we could deal with this motion. And then perhaps if someone would like to bring a motion forward for the exemption or anything, we could deal with that separately. I don't know if that, to me, it just feels like we're having sort of two different conversations. I know they are very related, but I think we could certainly separate them, but that's just my, my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram and Counselor Bunting.
Thank you, so these are inextricably linked, I think, in my, in my opinion, because we are talking about the parking fees that are going to be incurred. And that's part of what I would like to have waived for the, the businesses that weren't able to participate last year. Because that is going to substantially cost them. And I do have a little bit of an email from when I received a couple of emails from business owners. But this one just says that there's no minimal investment at this time for any small business owner in industries that were locked down and saw a loss of 80% of their revenue. We've only just come out of a second extended lockdown, perhaps heading into an increased restrictions again if a third wave hits. For many businesses in our community, there's been no opportunity to recover, only deepening financial loss. For a business with an average transaction of $9 to $15, the ability to recoup the costs as noted in all options will come slowly. If they have no alcohol sales to offset costs and customers linger on patios on nice days, this deepens the recovery. So I just, I think we need to keep that in mind when we're talking about thousands of dollars and an average transaction for some businesses of $9 to $15. That's not their profit margin, that's their ticket transaction. And to, to be able to put out thousands of dollars just to increase their capacity for a couple of months. You know, we're talking maybe five, six months. That's, that's a really difficult thing for lots of businesses to do. And I don't think we want to start to see, you know, emptying units throughout our core. The other, the other thing that we need to keep in mind is that we're going to be charging parking stall fees. They're going to have to get engineering drawings if they're doing the pop-up patio option. They have to get all of their insurance costs, mind you, the insurance costs now are going to be universal across the board. But the parking stall fees and the engineering drawings and any of the barriers that those pop-up patios have to put in place, none of the boardwalk participants had that last year, whereas these people are going to have those costs this year. So waiving the parking stall fees for people that were not able to participate and have that covered for them last year is, is going to go a long way to be able to help these restaurants and all of these businesses survive this summer.
Counselor Seven, then Counselor Bunting.
Thank you, I, I didn't, I spoke before, thank you.
Good, Counselor Bunting.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I, I agree with Counselor Seven with respect to dealing with the motion, and let's make another one and move forward with that. It would appear that, that a good number of counselors are in favor of this. I certainly don't want to see any businesses, any businesses going under because of this. Unfortunately, there are those businesses who are not able to, just by sheer geography, not able to participate in any way, shape, or form, even if they did want to. So I'll leave it at that. If we could do that, if that's on the, if that's doable, then I'd be agreeable with that for sure.
You. Counselor Vazalakos.
My question is more around is if we make it a separate motion, in, in the ones that's on the floor now, it would be to charge businesses. Then, then are we just, I mean, how, how do we work the decision then to turn around and say, you know, now we have a whole new motion to say, but we won't charge the ones that weren't involved last year? I'm just wondering how we could word this one so that we can have a subsequent motion.
Through your worship. It's my understanding that if the fees were to be waived for businesses that did not participate in a 2020 boardwalk program as it relates to occupying parking spaces, I might suggest that the wording be that option four be approved to set the 2021 fees for outdoor patios occupying parking spaces for businesses that participated in a 2020 boardwalk program. And that a flat fee not to exceed $100 be approved for each delivery, installation, disassembly, and pickup of patio boardwalks.
If I may, would it be easier to deal with Counselor Ingram's motion to waive the fees and then do the second one? Or the ones that's on the floor now?
Well, I think we have one that's on the floor now. So what we could do is if Counselor Ingram wanted to make an amending amendment to that, because it deals with a certain subset, I would, I would allow it as chair because I don't think it contravenes the main motion. And we would then vote on the amended motion. So Counselor Ingram, would you like to put forward amendment?
Yes, thank you, I'll do that, subject to the wording that our deputy clerk just provided.
Mr. Bantock, you have that.
Yes, so that would be to amend that option four be approved to set the 2021 fees for outdoor patios occupying parking spaces for those businesses that did not participate in the 2020 boardwalk program.
A second for that. Counselor Ingram.
Sorry, that wasn't, that wasn't quite right. It was, it was that option number four be approved to set the fees, the 2021 fees for outdoor patios occupying parking spaces for businesses who did participate in the boardwalk program from 2020. And that the fees be waived for those businesses who did not participate in the program in 2020.
Second for that. Counselor Burbach. So that is an amendment, correct, Mr. Bantock? Thank you. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed, if any? And that's carried, and then the amended motion? Any further discussion? If not all in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried, thank you.
Through your worship, item seven point five is a proclamation request for the Raise the Flag Campaign. And there is a motion that City Council hereby proclaims April 6, 2021 as World Autism Awareness Day in the City of Stratford and authorizes the flying of Autism Ontario's flag at Stratford City Hall on Tuesday, April 6, 2021.
Counselor Henderson will move, seconded by Counselor Burbach, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry, thank you.
Item seven point six is a resolution for Festival Hydro Inc. 2020 and 2021 dividends. And there is a motion included in your agendas that I would ask you reference.
Counselor Clifford, you'll move that, seconder, Counselor Bunting, discussion. Counselor Henderson.
We've probably had this explanation already, but I'm just want to double check. In the past, we used to get just over a little bit over a million dollars a year. And now it's down significantly. What is the main reason for that?
If Ms. Baroness is on or Ms. Thompson, I'll let Ms. Thompson or CEO will take that question.
Thank you, through you, your worship. So the, the, the board has notified the city that they would like to change up the dividend payments. It is my understanding that this is based on pandemic and the reduced electricity use in the city has caused them to, and the board, to make this recommendation. I believe also that this amount has already been included for this year in the budget.
Anything further? And I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? Let's carry, thank you.
Item seven point seven is a resolution for 711 Canada's Liquor Sales License Application. And there is a staff recommendation that Stratford City Council opposes the liquor license application for an indoor area at 327 Erie Street, 711 for the following reasons: number of police calls to this location to date, not wanting bars and convenience stores, the conflict between the sale of gasoline and alcohol in the same location, safety of pedestrians leaving the establishment, and potential insufficient parking pending further information.
Moved by Counselor Gaffney, seconded by Counselor Ritzman, discussion. And all in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry, thank you.
Item seven point eight is correspondence from the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority 2021 budget. And there is a motion that the correspondence dated March 8, 2021, from Upper Thames River Conservation Authority with respect to the 2021 levy for the City of Stratford be received by City Council.
Moved by Counselor Vazalakos, seconded by Counselor Burbach, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry.
Item seven point nine is a resolution for a fee waiver request for Memorial Gardens Hot Dog Cart Refreshment Vehicle. And there is a staff recommendation that the request to waive half of the 2021 lease payment fee for the hot dog cart refreshment vehicle vendor adjacent to Memorial Gardens be approved.
Counselor Burbach and Counselor Ingram moving in seconding, discussion. Counselor Burbach.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, and I think I've mentioned this before, I feel like the, the length of the term for the, these licenses is too long. Five years is a long time, a, a hot dog cart or other carts, they're, they're sort of, by their nature, they are temporary. And I think five years is, is a long commitment. So I think for, for future, we should maybe consider shortening that down to say two or three years. It also would allow other vendors an opportunity to, to fill in that spot if they so choose.
Counselor Henderson.
I thought the reason that it was five years originally was because of the fact that usually it was the younger person that was doing it. And then they have to go at all the expense of buying the cart and the umbrellas and, you know, setting up their food places they buy their food and stuff from. And, and that was the reason so that they would have a chance to at least work their business long enough to recoup their cost back and not have to, you know, and say two or three years, you know, risk having to lose it, plus they have to pay a fee every year, right? So.
I'm not sure that was questioned anyone or was just a statement about the background. So the motion is on the floor. Seeing other hands, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried, thank you.
Item A is business for which previous notice has been given and there is none scheduled. Item nine is reports of the standing committees. And item nine point one is report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee. And there are four reports listed. And there is a motion, sorry, item nine point one point one is Drinking Water Quality Management Standard 2020 Infrastructure Review. Nine point one point two being Drinking Water Quality Management Standard 2019 Management Review. Nine point one point three being drop off location at landfill for organic materials and cooking. And item nine point one point four being council's role in environmental initiatives. And there is a motion that the report of the Infrastructure, Transportation, and Safety Committee dated March 22, 2021 be adopted as printed.
Counselor Vazalakos moving second by Counselor Seven, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried.
Item nine point two is report of the Planning and Heritage Committee. And item nine point two point one is zone change application said zero four dash twenty for 3797 Downey Road 112. And there's a motion on the floor that reported the planning and heritage committee dated March 22, 2021, be adopted as.
Counselor Ritzman moving second, Counselor Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry.
Item ten is notice of intent. Item ten point one is notice of public meeting under the Planning Act. Stratford City Council will hold a public meeting on Monday, April 19, 2021 at 6:00 PM to hear all interested persons with respect to the following planning application. The zone change application said zero two dash twenty one for 55 to 65 Laurinav East. And further details can be found on the attached notices.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is reading of the bylaw, and there are four bylaws listed. Eleven point one, consumption of liquor with alcohol. Eleven point two is to amend zoning bylaw two zero one dash two thousand and two with respect to zone change application said zero four dash twenty for 3797 Downey Road 112. Item eleven three, agreement of purchase and sale for parts one and two, Plan 44R 5566. And eleven point four is an accept transfer of parts one and two for Plan 44R dash 5566. And all of these bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council president.
Counselor Seven.
Could we take eleven point two separately, please?
All right, so what we'll do then is moving bylaws eleven, one, three, and four to be taken collectively. Counselor Burbach and seconded by Counselor Ingram. All those, Counselor Burbach, yes, you had something else?
Yeah, I'm sorry, for eleven point one, maybe just for the minutes, it needs to be corrected. It's not consumption of liquor with alcohol, it's, I think, consumption of liquor with food. Yeah. Perhaps.
In the first sentence underneath the heading, it is correct, it's just that it didn't translate it between the two of them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor of taking bylaw eleven, one, three, and four collectively? And that's unanimous, so we'll go to first and second reading of bylaw eleven, one, three, and four. Counselor Beadie and Counselor Bunting moving in seconding, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry. Third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Clifford for bylaws eleven, one, three, and four. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry. First and second reading for bylaw eleven two, is there a mover? Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ingram. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Want to post, and that's carried, third and final reading, Counselor Vazalakos and Counselor Gaffney for bylaw eleven point two. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried, thank you.
Item number twelve is the consent agenda, and council has devised if they wish to consider any items.
Counselor Henderson. And Counselor Clifford.
Sorry, thought it was unmuted. I'd like to take CA 2021 oh four one on page two oh seven. Resolution from the Canadian Union of Postal Workers requesting support for delivering community power, a Canada Post program. I'd like to move that, that we endorse the resolution.
Seconded by Counselor Burbach, discussion. Not all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Counselor Clifford.
Yeah, I'd like us to look at CA 2021 oh four three. It's a resolution from the municipality of Tweed for the reform of the joint and several liability system because of escalating prices of insurance for all municipalities.
Thank you, Counselor Clifford, seconder, Counselor Seven, discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any, let's carry, thank you. Anything further? Your business? Seeing none, we can take a motion to adjourn to reconvene in standing committee. And the first committee would be Planning and Heritage. Counselor Vazalakos and Counselor Burbach moving in seconding, and that is carried. Will now adjourn and convene in Planning and Heritage.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to call to order the Planning and Heritage Committee Open Session. Item number two, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Item number three is delegations, and there are none scheduled. Item four, report of the manager of planning. Item four point one, draft plan of condominium application three ones, CDM two one dash zero zero one with the address of 3194 Vivian Line 37. And I believe Mr. Bannon is on the line to make a short presentation, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, I'm just getting the presentation ready here.
Ready here? Sorry, the PowerPoint's just taking a minute to load up and it's almost ready. So we receive an application for a phased draft plan of condominium, it was deemed complete on January fourth twenty twenty one. The subject property is located on north side of Vivian Line thirty seven between Romeo Street North and Harrison Street. The proposed plan contains a total of sixty two units, twenty eight residential units and thirty four parking units. The remainder of the plan is, is proposed to be common elements, including visitor parking spaces, driveways, waste disposal, a transformer, a gas meter, walkways, a storage area and an amenity area. The surrounding land uses to the north, there is a farm which is agricultural. To the east and to the west are both vacant land which are deemed as being future residential and to the south is an apartment dwelling residential. The lands were recently rezoned back in February of twenty twenty and they were, they were changed from a future residential F R and agricultural zone to residential fifth density, R five bracket one dash twenty, which allows for a maximum density of sixty five units per hectare. Reduced minimum parking standards, a bicycle parking requirement, and it also recognizes the municipal airport zoning regulations. The site was identified as an area of archaeological potential. The applicant has submitted stage one, two and three archaeological assessments uh, to the city and to the ministry. The ministry sign off was required prior to plan approval and any disturbances on the site. As a result, there are no other wise use of management or resources or public health and safety concerns. And we feel that the application is consistent with the provincial policy statement. The properties designated residential area in the official plan. And in accordance with section nine point four, the plan of condominiums are meant to conform to the general policies and designation of the O P and must create a minimum number of units that are appropriate to allow for a reasonable independent operation of a condominium corporation. The proposed draft plan conforms to the general policies and the designation of the O P will allow for a reasonable independent operation of that condominium. The draft plan condominium proposes to entice thirty four parking spaces. It provides seven visitor parking spaces, including one barrier free space within the common element. There is one other barrier free parking space on the property and does not visitor parking, but is still within the common element. Draft plan meets the zoning by law requirements. The list of conditions were sent to the applicant on March fifth. They have provided some feedback and we've incorporated that feedback into the recommended conditions of approval. The owner was granted site plan approval in August of twenty twenty for two apartment buildings with a total of twenty residential units. Building permit was issued in August for the first apartment building and the city continues to hold securities on the site plan agreement. We have received comments back during the agency circulation. Building Services and Bell Canada have provided comments and we've incorporated their concerns into the list of conditions that are recommended for approval. Engineering Services, Transit, Hydro One, Fire and Festival Hydro all have no concerns with the application. There's a recommendation before you that we recommend approval because of the request is consistent with the provincial policy statement and it conforms with the goals, objectives and policies of the official plan. I'm available to answer any questions.
Council Henderson.
I thought originally when they brought this forward, they were doing the same as the other across the road. They were having four accessible units and then parking spots the same. Second part is, I'm not sure if they've got this far or not, but the accessible spots in the ones across the road don't have the curb removed for easy access to the sidewalk and are they doing that in this one? And the third one is when they came, I thought they were selling these for like two hundred thousand and uh, that they were going to be more affordable units. And now they were having wanting us to recommend, you know, to approve a plan of condominium. So I'm just a bit confused what's going on.
So Mr. Bannon is available to answer, but I also know that Ms. Baker of uh, agent for the applicant is also available to answer questions as well, so Mr. Bannon?
Thank you through the chair, um, some of the questions I, I think I can answer. I wasn't involved with the, the development across the street, so I'm not sure of the, the details of the accessibility on that property. What I can tell you is that this um, application did go through site plan approval. The parking spaces, they do provide access, barrier free access to the front of each of the buildings. And it does meet the zoning by law requirements um, for what was required through the zoning and through the site plan application. But uh, if Ms. Ms. Baker might be able to write a little bit more um, feedback or a little better opinion on the development across the street.
Ms. Baker, are you available?
Yes, good afternoon, you can hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, uh, through the chair to Counselor Henderson, thank you for the questions. I can confirm that there continues to be the accessible dwelling units uh, within the building that has not changed. And as noted by Mr. Bannon, there are the two accessible parking spaces per the approved uh, site plan. I'll try my best to answer the questions regarding sale price, um, certainly with the current uh, real estate phenomenon uh, in Stratford and, and surrounding area, but my recollection from the zoning by law amendment application and the presentation before uh, committee and council was that Mr. Paul from Full Quality Homes had indicated a target between three hundred and three hundred and fifty as a miss in the city of Stratford um, at that time, um, and that was uh, approximately a year and a half ago. I can't speak to what the actual sale price is versus a listing price. But uh, my understanding is they continue to be on the more affordable side of what's currently available in the city uh, for purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, and Council Ingram?
It didn't really answer my question about if they're selling them, why are they asking for a plan of condominium?
Uh, through the, the chair to Counselor Henderson, the condominium is required to be able to sell them. So as you probably know, the building is under construction. And uh, if the draft plan of condominium is approved, uh, the owner is required to fulfill the conditions that are set out uh, in the staff report. And what that'll do is allow for the registration of the condominium, which will create uh, separate and defined dwelling units that can be conveyed and sold. And the condominium also creates the common elements uh, to the condominium structure, which would be visitor parking, landscape areas, garbage collection, bike parking, um, and those would be accessible to all dwelling unit owners. So this uh, application is actually required to be able to sell the units.
Well, maybe I'm misunderstanding this, is this not where you have to have a board of directors and then people pay a monthly fee and then they take care of the property?
Uh, through the chair, correct, uh, when you establish a condominium, uh, there's a condominium board uh, that is established uh, that has required reporting and meetings and make collective decisions for all the unit owners. Uh, but each individual dwelling unit is separately and individually owned and conveyable on title at the land registry office.
Did they do that with the, the units across the road also?
That is correct.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Council Henderson, Council Ingram.
Thank you, I'm happy to move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Council Ingram, a seconder for that, Council Clifford. Any further discussion, Council Burbak?
Uh, yes, thank you, um, a few questions about uh, garbage or waste collection. So we have a new green bin program in Stratford and I'm wondering if um, this plan takes into consideration the collection of organics, so a green bin program. And then I guess a second question, which probably be more for staff. Um, are we looking at revising some of our um, requirements so that it does incorporate uh, the green bin program into uh, garbage and waste collections uh, moving forward for new developments?
Mr. Bannon, do you want to speak to the green bin program?
Through the chair, um, yes, that's something that we can look at incorporating into our policies and make sure that that does get included in uh, future site plan agreements. The site plan agreement that was registered on title does show waste disposal but at the rear of the site. I have not heard that they're looking at doing the green bin po- program at the back of the site. Uh, and again, uh, Ms. Baker might be able to provide more feedback, but uh, it wasn't a requirement at the time because site plan approval, I think, was in place uh, prior to that program being in implemented.
I see Mr. Delovik had his hand up, uh, do you want to jump in, Director?
Through the chair quickly, I mean, we are looking at uh, how the programs will operate with uh, existing sites and that's something we'll have to look at in the future as we expand the program, but you know, it's, there's always a challenge between uh, private uh, pickup that they'll have for waste and then uh, accommodating green bins at the, at the street. So we are working with our contractor right now on how best to accommodate facilities like this to uh, implement green bin programs.
Thank you, anything further, Council Burbak? Thank you, Council Henderson.
This count, this is um, for Ed, um, so this would be similar to like Long Street and Short Street and places like that and Gold Road, the ones that have private roads and somehow being able to figure out how to get them incorporated into the green bin program. Is that what you mean?
Through the chair, yes, that, that's what we're looking at.
So there is a motion on the floor, yeah, any further discussion? I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and there's one opposed, and that's carried. Item number five is adjourned. Moved by Council Ingram, seconded by Council Bunting. All in favor? And that's unanimous and we're adjourned, thank you.
Finance next, is it? Uh, I'll call to order the finance and labor relation, a committee. Uh, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof? Council Burbak, uh, do you have the numbers of, 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 like of the ones that you have a conflict?
I do, so it's, the item is four point one and uh, the organizations are Stratford Symphony Orchestra, number twelve.
Twelve, yes.
Yep, inner chambers, number fourteen.
Fourteen.
And uh, Here For Now Theater is number twenty three.
Well, you, you've got three of them, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, twelve, fourteen and twenty three, so if we, we can take the three of those all by themselves after, is that? So, um, thank you. So four point, four point one is a report of the twenty twenty one community grants evaluation. Maybe, and I would love, I would like to thank uh, Council Vaselasco, Council Bunting and Council Gaffney for all their hard work on this. So I thank them and we have a motion that the management report entitled Report of the Twenty Twenty One Community Grants Evaluation Committee be received and the council approved the following twenty twenty one one time grant recommendations of the Community Grants Evaluation Committee and the amount of, that won't be quite the same. And we're including twelve, fourteen and twenty three, do I have a Hoover for that? It moved by Council Gaffney, seconded by Council Vaselasco. Open for open for questions or comments on those, all but the three. Okay, I'll call, um, all, all in favor of that motion? That's unanimous. And do I have a Hoover for twelve, fourteen and twenty three, Council Henderson will move it? And Council Ingram will second it. And we do have a pecuniary interest on that one from uh, Council Burbak. Any questions or comments? I'll call the question, all in favor of the motion? That's unanimous. And I guess the only other thing is motion to adjourn. Moved by Council Vaselasco, seconded by Council Bunting, all in.
You didn't do the, you didn't do the one time grant.
Sorry?
The one at the bottom, did you include that, the one time grant part?
Uh, well, I included them all together, but if you want me to take those by themselves, I can't.
No, I didn't think you did, I thought you just went to twenty four, I didn't think you did the multi-year grant. Sorry. See how there's um, on page, the middle of page four?
Absolutely, Counselor.
Was that, was that part of the motion?
I, I, I believe it was, but for clarification, I, I will have, and I'll, I'll have a separate motion on that one. And I, I thank you, and it's moved by Council Gaffney and seconded by Council Vaselasco. Any questions on the one time?
No, multi-year.
The multi, sorry. All in favor? Thank you, motion to adjourn. Moved by Council Burbak, seconded by Council PD, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Social Services, next.
I'd like to call the Social Services Committee to order. Any declarations of pecuniary interests in general nature therefore? Seeing none, there's a subcommittee minutes are, are attached and there's no delegation scheduled. And um, the report of the director of Social Services. Um, a new provincial municipal vision for social services, Kim, would you like to have, say a few words about this?
Good afternoon through the chair, uh, the report before you is the new provincial municipal vision for social assistance. And it's a plan that will roll out over the next few years. Uh, it's a very preliminary plan and at this time, the premise of the plan is that the province will automate and realign administrative functions at the provincial level, example, the intake functions, the payment functions. And the municipalities will end up pivoting using their expertise to focus on life stability for clients. So that's the initial vision that uh, the province is putting forward with the social assistance modernization and the new vision.
And it was encouraging to hear that they're gonna roll it out slowly. And then, you know, they're starting out with smaller municipalities moving forward, I think, what, seven?
Uh, through the chair, uh, is, is that the intake, uh, the, the centralized intake to the province that you're referring to?
Yes, okay. Anyway, um, all in favor? Oh, sorry, Council Gaffney, you have a question?
No, but we probably shouldn't make a motion, Madam Chair. I will move the recommendation.
All right, okay, Council Gaffney's moving, who would like to second it? Council Risma. All in favor? Carried, thank you, sorry about that. Um, so the rest is for information of committee, I hope for you've read it all, and I'm looking for a German. Council Vacalasis, Council Bunting, all in favor? Carried, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'll call the Community Services Committee meeting to order. Item two, disclosure of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof. Seeing none. Item three, subcommittee minutes are there for your information. Item four, there is delegations for which we have none scheduled. Item five is for the information of the committee, we had at our subcommittee an update from our director and he was uh, providing information related to all the activities that have been going on. And uh, at that time, there were no motions uh, brought forward to be dealt with. Um, item five point two are the advisory committee meetings, um, for your information. And so at this time, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Clifford, seconded by Council Henderson, all in favor? And that is carried, thank you.
Council reconvene, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Bannon to come and reconvene.
Through your worship, item number fifteen, council reconvene, and item number fifteen one are declarations of pecuniary interest made at standing committees.
Council Burbak.
Yes, at the Finance Labor Relations, item four point one, uh, there were three organizations that I have a, a business or board relationship with.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen point two are, is committee reports and item number fifteen point two point one is the Finance and Labor Relations Committee. Uh, and I will read the motion uh, with the exception of the organizations uh, listed by Council Burbak. So the motion on the floor is that item four point one uh, of the Finance and Labor Relations Committee meeting dated March twenty second twenty twenty one be adopted as follows. Uh, that the management report entitled Report of the Twenty Twenty One Community Grants Evaluation be received. That council approved the following twenty twenty one one time grant recommendations of the Community Grants Evaluation Committee in the amount of up to one hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and there are twenty four listed. That council approved the following twenty twenty one multi-year grant recommendations of the Community Grants Evaluation Committee in the amount of up to two hundred and fifty seven thousand, three hundred dollars. And there are five listed. That an amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars be identified for contingency in the twenty twenty one community grants budget. That prior to release of any approved twenty twenty one grants, each recipient be asked to confirm that events are being held and money solely used as outlined in their original applications with no substitutions or changes. That prior to release of any approved twenty twenty one grants, the Community Grants Evaluation Committee review requests for substitutions or changes for individual grants and reports its recommendations back to council for approval of any twenty twenty one grant reductions. That any appeals received from twenty twenty one grant applications be considered by the Finance and Labor Relations Subcommittee.
Moved by Counselor Clifford and seconded by Counselor Gaffney. We will separate out twelve, fourteen and twenty three for Counselor Burbak. And we'll also include the recommendation for the one time, or sorry, the multi-year grants. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed to any, that's carried. Counselor Clifford and Counselor Gaffney, that's you moved twelve, fourteen and twenty three also. Thank you. And I'll call the question, all those in favor, opposed to any, and that's carried. We'll note that Counselor Burbak did not take part in the discussion.
Your worship, item fifteen point three is reading up the reconvene bylaws. And there is one bylaw listed, which is the confirmatory bylaw, which requires first and second and third and final reading.
Move first and second reading is Counselor Henderson and Counselor Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, opposed to any, that's carried. Third and final reading of the confirmatory bylaws, Counselor Azalakos and Gaffney, moving and seconding. All those in favor, opposed to any, and that's carried. And a motion to adjourn this afternoon's proceedings. Counselor Ingram, Counselor Bunting, all those in favor, opposed to any, and that's carried. Thank you very much.